Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the meeting of the City Commission of West Palm Beach. Today is March 7th, 2022, and the time is 5:00 P.M. We will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence. In a few minutes, I'm going to proclaim today COVID-19 Memorial Day. As of March 1st, approximately 6 million people worldwide have lost their lives and approximately 951,000 United States, folks in the United States have lost their lives. Keep them in mind, and certainly those who have become victims to the war in Ukraine. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Mr. President, can you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will very briefly go over our rules of civility and decorum. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and shall not interrupt the speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted, and we do have a mask mandate which will be enforced. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Ms. Johnson, do we have any additions, leishens, reorganization of the agenda?
No, missed him here.
Very good. I do have a few proclamations. The first is proclamation proclaiming March 7th, 2022, as COVID-19 Memorial Day. This proclamation supports the designation of the first Monday in March as COVID-19 Memorial Day in remembrance of those who have lost their lives, in honor of those who are forever marked by COVID and continue to suffer from the impact of the virus. I will enter this proclamation into the record. We do have another proclamation proclaiming March 2022 as Public Procurement Month. This proclamation will be accepted by Paul Bassar, who is our city's procurement official. The proclamation proclaims March as Public Procurement Month. Public procurement professionals ensure a cost-effective use of public funds for making purchases for government needs. The West Palm Beach Procurement Division ensures that public funds are awarded to responsible and responsive contractors who provide the best value to the city. So I'll take this down to Mr. Bassar. Congratulations. You want to say a few comments?
Thanks.
Absolutely.
So, for the record, Paul Bassar, procurement official, mayor, Mr. President, commissioners, city administrator, city attorney, and city staff. I am very honored and extremely thankful to be receiving this proclamation on behalf of the procurement staff, who at this time I would like to acknowledge, please stand and remain standing when I call your name, Josephine Croach, Senior Procurement Specialist, Mahalia Watson Foster, Procurement Specialist, Monica Keel, Procurement Specialist, Sharice McGee Mayfield, Contract Specialist, Tiffany McCray, Purchasing Agent, Marine Hans Raj, Purchasing Agent, Ayesha DeRoe, Purchasing Assistant. So, Mayor, Mr. President, commissioners, standing before you are the dedicated professional procurement staff members who on a daily basis provide procurement service to the city, which is a huge undertaking.
Thank you very much.
So, in closing, I just want to forewarn everyone that change is coming in our procurement processes. We are diligently seeking and finding ways to be more efficient, timely, and better stewards in managing our contract responsibilities. Again, a sincere thank you for the proclamation and recognition.
Thank you. And thank you to the work of your staff. Commissioners, you probably don't really see it, but there is just so much work that this department does in terms of making sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is from a procurement standpoint, and there's a lot of work that goes into it. And so we truly appreciate all the work that you all put into it and keeping us on track. And, you know, if something were to happen and they said, "We'll just send it to procurement," and we expect it back in five minutes, and I know it doesn't happen that quickly. So, I will publicly apologize if I'm one of those persons who has suggested that we get it done in five minutes. But no, you all work very hard and diligent, and we appreciate all your services. Thank you. And it gives me great pleasure to announce this next proclamation, which is recognizing March as Women's History Month. The City of West Palm Beach is so proud to honor the history and contributions of women in our community and around the nation, and we have a proclamation that will be entered into the record. Certainly appreciate all the hard work of all the women involved in running this government, including the four who are seated on this dais with me. Was that enough sucking up? Okay, thank you. No, it's true. It's from the heart. You guys work so hard. Okay, we'll move on to consent calendar, items 7.1 through 7.4. Any comments on consent? Do we have any cards? Anything in the portal? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing, no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.1, Resolution Number 54-22, ratifying the submittal of an application to the Department of Homeland Security for a SAFER grant in the approximate amount of $4.9 million to fund the salaries for 15 new firefighters for three years. Chief Matty.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, staff, Chief Matty, Fire Department. Proud to say that we submitted another application for the SAFER grant for 15 firefighters. We've had tremendous success with this grant in the past. We've funded 73 firefighter positions over the years, and this would bring us up to 88. We have had occasion where it has had matching funds. We've had occasion where FEMA has decided that there are no matching funds, so this one does have a match, and it's a three-year program, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for the effort in getting this grant across the line. I know we have had tremendous success with the SAFER grants, and fingers crossed we will be successful in this application as well. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Shoef.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for always looking to be proactive in looking for grant opportunities. Really exciting to potentially be picked here. I think my question is more towards Administrator Johnson. As we look at the three-year commitment that this grant would potentially cover new firefighters, from a budgeting perspective, would we then look after that three-year period to bring those on to regular operational expenses? Would we account for the fact that by the time three years is up, essentially, we would grow year over year from a firefighter perspective anyway? Or how would we look to maintain the employees we would potentially take on after the three-year commitment?
Essentially, what we do is, under the three-year expenditure forecast that we do, you know, we would look to then dow in it if the match requirements were included in the grant on an annual basis, we would dow the city's match requirement into the three-year forecast. In this particular instance, as it was with the last SAFER grant, there is no match requirement, so we would dow the entire expense to come into our budget for that fiscal year where the three-year period will end.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I thought I understood your question. The Commissioner Shoef, would we then move them over to the general fund budget or under the Fire Department once at three years? Was that your question?
It was, and I thought that's what the Administrator had answered after that period, that they would be part of the regular expense.
Yes, I just said dow it into the budget. I didn't specify whether it would be general fund or the fire assessment fee.
Okay, okay.
So it would be one or the other, or a combination thereof.
Correct, but we have a plan to maintain the employees we would bring.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. We would retain the employees, the firefighters, into our workforce. The city has not had a history where, although the grant would allow you at the end of the three-year period to transition them out, that has not been our practice, nor would it be in the future.
Excellent, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 54-22.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing, no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.2, Resolution Number 55-22, ratifying the submittal of an application to the Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, for an assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $1,013,950.91 for personal protective equipment and wellness program for, any wellness program for firefighters. Chief Matty.
Thank you again. This is the AFG grant, which is for equipment and training, and we have also had great success with this particular grant in the past. This one is, some months back, we came to commission and got approval to use some fire assessment fee funds for bunker gear. And so because of the nationwide backlog of supply chain, et cetera, we have still not received the gear that we have ordered, so as such, we have not paid for it. So we're trying to be proactive, try to apply for a grant, and kind of get more for our dollars. The SAFER firefighters that we got two years ago, the 28 firefighters, did not come with bunker gear, so we're still trying to, you know, build up our stockpile of bunker gear for all of those firefighters as well. We'd like to have each firefighter have two sets of gear for cancer prevention purposes and efficiency. The other part of the grant is a comprehensive wellness and fitness program that goes above and beyond what the clinic provides for our firefighters, that teaches body mechanics, more information about nutrition for a longer health span for our fighters, firefighters, not just wellness. So, we're hopeful that we're successful.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments? I did have occasion to go to the badge pending ceremony last week. What, you had 13 new firefighters?
That was 17.
Seventeen come online, and a very impressive group. I was most impressed with how young they looked.
The older we get, sir, the younger they look.
The older who gets?
She needs you.
Anyway, that's right. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 55-22.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing, no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for your good work. Item 9.1, Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance Number 4992-22, amending Chapter 34, Environment to Create Article VII, Natural Areas, to Provide Regulations Governing the City's Natural Areas. Can you read right?
I want to thank you for having me, Mayor, Councilmen, members. For you that don't know me, I'm Sergeant Heiser, West Palm Beach Police Department. I wear many hats. One of them is I'm the supervisor over the law enforcement officers that patrol grassy waters, as well as the unincorporated area of the M Canal going out through Loxahatchee. I propose these ordinance due to the fact we have a difficult time enforcing certain ordinances or rules out there. We have signage, but we don't have the ability to enforce anything due to the lack of the ordinances. This is Amendment to 34, Article VII. It's the legal language to protect the natural areas and penalties for the violations, such as illegally accessing the natural areas, protecting the plants and wildlife, people that fish out there, illegal boating, use of vehicles out there, fires, other things such as camping, and most of all, it protects the city drinking water, which is obviously one of the largest surface supply drinking water in the state of Florida, being West Palm Beach. The area encompasses nearly 24 square miles of the city, which is approximately 47% of the city. There's over 30 miles of canals and waterways in grassy waters. There's multiple city structures to control pump stations and flow control systems out there, and the trails are heavily utilized out there. A Poe Park, AKA Poe Trailhead, it's one of the most popular places for hiking and biking, as you know. And historically, like I said before, there's signs out there that says, "No fishing, no hunting, no this, no that," but we have no ordinances to back them, to enforce, other than issuing trespassing warnings and addressing it with a trespass warning. And I work with the staff on this with grassy waters, and we agree on this. This is, we work together to get these all written, so.
Well, first of all, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your service, and you're right, grassy waters is so important to our water supply, and whatever tools we can give you to help, that we certainly want to do that. Comments, questions? President, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. And as the District Four Commissioner, which encompasses this area, I want to publicly thank Sergeant Heiser for all the work that he's done with regard to our natural areas and specifically grassy waters. You may or may not know that Sergeant Heiser has been working on this for many years, and to see this finally come to fruition with the set of rules and regulations that are going to protect our wetlands and grassy waters, it's just fantastic, and I want to thank you for that dedication to preserving our natural resources. With that being said, many of you may not know, if you could put up Slide 4, Sergeant Heiser, that would be fantastic.
If I can find page up and page down, sure.
So, many of you may or may not know that, obviously, we know that grassy waters is an area that our police department patrols, but our police department also recently secured a memorandum of understanding with the Sheriff's Office that we actually patrol all the way out the M Canal to the L8 Canal, which is, what, 10 miles west of the city limits at Ibis or grassy waters?
It's approximately 8.5 miles, and for you, I'll give you a little more on it. L8 Canal goes to Lake Okeechobee is where the city drinking water comes from. L8 is South Florida Water Management. We have a control structure. If you look on the board up there, I'll put the arrow. We have a control structure all the way out here in western Loxahatchee. This is the L8 Canal here, going up to, I believe, Port Myaca at the gates. So, we have a control structure out there, which is approximately 8.5, 9 miles from the rear of Ibis. And we, last year, I got an MOU with the Sheriff's Office, giving us enforcement ability, because it's considered unincorporated Palm Beach County, and I got an MOU to give us jurisdiction 1,000 feet north of the canal and 1,000 feet south of the canal.
And I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention, because I wasn't even aware of this until I had the discussion with Sergeant Heiser, of what a tremendous undertaking it is to protect our waterways and our drinking water, that we are actually patrolling that far west, you know, west of Seminole Pratt Whitney Road, that we patrol all the way out there. And that brings me to one of my concerns. You know, we have now grassy waters taken care of, because we're going to have an ordinance in place that allows you to protect the water and protect our natural resources, but we don't have similar ordinances in place with regard to the M Canal, because it's not in the city of West Palm Beach. It's unincorporated. We do own the canal. We do now provide law enforcement, general law enforcement, you know, 1,000 feet on each side of the canal, but we don't, other than state laws, we don't really have any enforcement, any guidelines for enforcing the environmental protections that we now will have with grassy waters. So I think we need to take a close look at whether we talk with the county about maybe being able to institute some of the county environmental ordinances, or we have to look at potentially, and I don't know, whether it's even a feasible annexing going out that eight point some miles to that lift station before it gets to the L8 Canal. It's the only way, I think, that we're going to be able to enforce our ordinances, is if it's incorporated into the city of West Palm Beach. But if that is not a possibility, then I think we need to look to the county and see if they either have ordinances on the books that we could enforce with regard to our waterway, or ask them to put ordinances in place. But again, tremendous undertaking, trying to keep our waterways safe, especially since that's a canal that goes so far outside of the city of West Palm Beach. I don't think there's another jurisdiction in Florida that has a situation like this where they, where a city owns property that goes, you know, 8, 10 miles outside of the city, and we're responsible for enforcement of it. So I thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, for bringing that to our attention. Ms. Johnson, can you make a note to reach out to the county and see if they can work with this on getting an ordinance, a county ordinance passed that will cover this area?
Yes, sir.
And close that loop? Okay, we will follow up on that, Mr. President. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Fana?
Mayor, thank you. Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. Mayor, I just wanted to echo Commissioner Paduzzi's words with Sergeant Heiser. I mean, you don't see often somebody will stick with something for this long, as he has, and the grassy water staff, and of course, our legal staff, who've been working on this for a long time, and it's one thing to say we want to protect our environmental resources, and nothing to put teeth behind it, and we're finally putting teeth behind it, and I wanted to publicly thank you for that.
Thank you for those comments. If there are no other comments, we don't have any cards, nothing in the portal, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 4992-22.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4992-22. Public hearing and first reading of an ordinance by the City Commissioner of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 34, Environment, to Create Article VII, Natural Areas, to Provide Regulations Governing Conduct in the City's Natural Areas, Including Grassy Waters Preserve, Water Catchment Area, Providing Conflict Clause, or Suburbity Clause, a Qualification Clause, and Effective Date and Other Purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing, no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9.2, Public Hearing of Resolution Number 46-22, a request by Anna Riddell on behalf of Palm Beach Medical Property LLC for the abandonment of an approximately 20-foot-wide by 214-foot-long platted alley, consisting of approximately 0.1 acres, located east of South Dixie Highway between Winter Street and Maddox Street. Ms. Van?
Angela Van, for the record, planning his own an administrator. The actual applicant for this project is actually, could not make it tonight, so I will stand in and make the presentation showing the alley abandonment. As the mayor stated, this project is located at 6910 South Dixie Highway, as shown on the overhead. The subject property is located, alleys between Maddox and Winter Street, Dixie Highway and Vivarde Avenue. The current alley is currently used by the applicant, has parking on both sides of it, as you can see. It's currently a 20-foot by 214-foot-long alley, right away, approximately 4,280 square feet of alley, and it only currently serves the applicant. As you can see, photos looking north and photos looking south right now, and this is one portion of the alley in that area that's still in existence. Property to the south of it runs into the, it's a school in this area. City files it complies with abandonment criteria established in Section 78, 217 of the city's Code of Ordinance, and the applicant has agreed to pay the city $147,000 for the property. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 46-22.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign.
Ordinance, Mayor.
It's an ordinance? Says public hearing resolution. But is it an ordinance?
Ordinance resolution. All right. Bye-bye. My apologies.
Oh, really? I'm not going to say that. Thank you for your assistance. You're trying to help. Okay, as I was saying before I so rudely interrupted, I will entertain a motion. It's been moved, right? Second. I think it's only appropriate that you second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hearing, no discussion. I will, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing, no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Comments in the public? Do we have any cards? Okay. Darren Studstill.
I promise I'll be real brief. Darren Studstill, 401 North Rose, Mayor. I just wanted to come up and publicly thank Ms. Fay Johnson for coming over to the Northwest and our business association and all the commissioners for your continued support in the Northwest. Now, Ms. Johnson, everybody's looking for their West Palm Beach toolkit, so we got to box that and get that down the city side and over there. But I just want to come up and say thank you for this entire body, for your support of everything that we do over in the Northwest, is really making an impact as we move forward and collectively grow the Northwest. Thank you for the time, for your time.
Thank you very much for those words. Anything in the portal? Okay, we'll now move on to comments from the dais, and we'll start with you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say I'll be brief, but I think I have to go.
No, 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 just be brief. Yeah, just.
The mayor is going to see that if he can beat my record of 49 minutes for this meeting, and it looks like he's on his way to doing that, but I guess it depends on
Not unless you, not if you feel like it.
Whether my colleagues want me to maintain that record or not. But in all seriousness, tomorrow is Election Day. Hopefully, everyone either has already voted or will make it out to vote. Make your voice heard and make your vote count. I know within the city of West Palm Beach, we have one open seat because of the retirement of Commissioner Shoef, and I'm sure we'll have other opportunities, but again, I'd like to express our appreciation for all of your hard work and your service to the city of West Palm to the city of West Palm Beach, and, um, so get out and vote tomorrow, and then, obviously, our thoughts and prayers are with the, the people of the Ukraine. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by, um, acknowledging the Mayor's Town Hall that you have planned next Wednesday, I'm sorry, this Wednesday,
This Wednesday.
March ninth at six-thirty. We are looking forward to welcoming you in the South End at South Olive, um, Community Center and, um, tennis facility, so we look forward in anybody who lives in the South End, and, and I think we're talking about, the South End is south of Okeechobee to our Lake Worth border, so we'd love to have you there to hear the mayor's updates. Additionally, the following Wednesday is the police chief's meeting, um, on March sixteenth at six P M. at the Cox Science Center, and my understanding is that, given the number of comments at the last chief's meeting, that he has reached out and invited our traffic engineer, um, to see what they can do to work together to solve some of the concerns of the residents. Speaking of the police, want to say congratulations to the Police Foundation for the successful Run With The Cops five K held in Drayer Park this weekend. It was a great turnout, um, and always a wonderful event out there, and a, and a great space to utilize for a community run. And I was very fortunate that, right after that, I got to just walk a few feet over, um, to join another community event, FPL Community Cares Event, along with the community greening organization planted thirty new trees in Drayer Park, and it was great to help them and support them in that effort. And then, finally, I just, um, wanted to take a moment, because it is a rare occasion when Women's History Month collides with Public Procurement Month, and that I have a, a connection to that. I grew up with a single mom who, who worked a lot to help put food on the table for all of us, and she worked in procurement, and so, very early on, I got to see what it meant to work in public service. She worked for NASA, um, she started as a secretary and worked her way up, put herself through school, and then worked in the procurement department. And, um, I'm sorry, our procurement officers aren't here to, to hear this, but I just, I wanted to thank them for all the work that they do, because I sat oftentimes at another table doing my homework while my mom worked on procurement, um, and I am, um, sad that she's not still with us today, but I am honored by the legacy she leaves, and, um, wanted just to share that NASA even recognized her for outstanding advocacy with the agency for her contribution in innovative approaches to using minority and women-owned businesses to Gloria Marsh at Kennedy Space Center, and she is an inspiration to me for the work that I do every day, so thank you to our procurement department. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that story. Uh, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I want to start by saying a huge congratulations to Crystal Phillips. She is the newest homeowner in District Three. I was excited that last week I got to attend the, uh, celebration ribbon cutting for her new home, and it was just a fantastic day. She actually hasn't, hadn't even told her children yet, and so she was waiting to surprise them later, um, but really grateful that we had the opportunity to partner with Neighborhood Renaissance, uh, our HCD Department, our CRA, and Mayor To You, you know, for making sure that we're keeping homeownership such a huge priority in our city and, um, affordable for so many that might have not otherwise realized that they were going to have this opportunity, so I'm really excited to welcome her to District Three. Um, and then I also just wanted to mention to everyone about election day tomorrow, um, and everyone who is registered to vote in the city of West Palm Beach can vote tomorrow, um, whether or not you live in District One or not, so encourage everyone to get out and vote. If you've already voted by mail, you can also go to the Supervisor of Elections website and easily check to make sure that your ballot was received. Um, and just a huge thank you to our clerk, um, and good luck tomorrow. I know that this is a huge undertaking for, um, we have more, um, I, I think we have the most precincts in the county, is what, what she was telling me earlier, so obviously it's no small undertaking to ensure that it's easy and runs smoothly, so thank you for all you're doing and your team, and good luck tomorrow, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Shofa?
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, again, as my colleagues have said, tomorrow's voting day, a very important election to fill this seat, and how apropos that we talk about voting and our freedoms, when, uh, nationally, I think the last report I heard this morning was that in the last ten days, a million people have fled Ukraine, um, to neighboring Poland and other countries, and those freedoms should never be taken for granted, so please, when you have a quiet moment, say a prayer, uh, keep Ukraine in your thoughts. Um, we also have several upcoming events. Um, the Northwood Shores Community Yard Sale will be on March the twelfth from eight A.M. to twelve P.M. You can, uh, get to a check-in point at twenty-one-eleven Thirty-Sixth Street or twenty-nine-sixteen North Flagler Drive. This week, we will also have the chief's, um, crime meeting for Twenty-Fifth Street through Fifty-Ninth Street, um, at forty-one-oh-five Pine Wood Avenue, that's the Boys and Girls Club, the George Boys and Girls Club, at six P.M. And also wanted to say to, uh, my fellow women on the dais and the many great women of the shoulders that we stand on, um, happy Women's History Month. So, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing that.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to also congratulate, uh, Chief Matty, as well as the, uh, city of West Palm Beach for the newly inducted seventeen firefighters that we were able to see sworn in. I was very happy to see the diversity of the people that were inducted. There were men and women and, uh, people younger than my children and, uh, people, yes, and, and, and just, I, I think every group that I could think of, um, there were quite a few people that were represented, and that was amazing. I think that it shows the true makeup of the city of West Palm Beach, and we are truly diverse, and that was certainly shown during that induction ceremony. Um, congratulations to, uh, City Administrator Johnson and the wonderful meeting that we had over at, at City Side Suites. The, there was close to one hundred people that showed up to hear what the city administrator had to say about our great city, and that is a tremendous turnout, so we'll, you'll have to go back and, and talk again soon, but that was really a huge feat, so congratulations to you for that, and thank you to all of the city departments that showed up, that were there and prepared to, uh, answer questions if anybody had anything that they asked. On March twenty-third, the city of West Palm Beach will host Palm Beach County League of Cities. Palm Beach County League of Cities is our shared, uh, where we share a vision and best practices that make for better communities. It's a networking organization for municipal officials in Palm Beach County. We will be hosting them on March twenty-third at one of our, uh, parks in the great city of West Palm Beach, and I would just like to, uh, state again, please make sure that you vote and understand the power of your vote. Tomorrow is our election for West Palm Beach, as, as well as other municipalities, and I do encourage you to take full part and participate and vote tomorrow if you haven't already voted. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I too will be brief. Um, just wanted to, to let, uh, you all know, but let the public know, we had a press conference, uh, this morning, uh, actually this afternoon, uh, was joined by, uh, Fire Chief Dinah Matty, Palm Beach County Mayor Robert Weinroth, Commissioner McBernard, Commissioner Ryan Boilston, and Palm Beach Soil and Water Conservation District Chair Rob Long. Uh, we, uh, stood together, uh, in support of Florida Senate Bill, uh, twenty-five-oh-eight, uh, urging, uh, the passage, uh, and the signing of that legislation. Uh, for those who may not be familiar, uh, that particular legislation would help to ensure, uh, Lake Okeechobee operations and, and levels were sufficient, uh, to meet the needs of, of South Floridians, including, uh, those residents who are dependent upon, uh, Lake Okeechobee for their water supply, their livelihoods, and, um, many might know, if we remember the slide that was there earlier, the how the water flows through the M Canal, from Lake Okeechobee through the M Canal into grassy waters, uh, over the course of year, up to half of our water, fifty percent can come from the lake, so it's very important that we are, um, um, assured of a sufficient supply of water. Uh, none of you here on the dais in twenty-eleven, when we were literally twenty-two days away from running out of water, and believe me, that's not a position we want to be in, particularly as our city continues to grow. Uh, it's been said, tomorrow's election day, um, the, uh, polls are open from seven A.M. to seven P.M., uh, for District One Commissioner's seat, very important seat, uh, and I, I tell people all the time, you should really prioritize municipal elections. Uh, as, as municipal, uh, elected officials, we have much more impact on your, over your day-to-day lives than the folks who are in Tallahassee or, uh, in Washington, D.C. So, it's very important that you put the right people in office. Um, as was mentioned earlier, uh, I am hosting a mayoral town hall. Uh, Commissioners, as you know, we no longer, we, we have not been having the, uh, mayoral, uh, meetings, uh, that we would have normally have over in Flagler Gallery. Uh, we're going to resume those, but I thought as we, uh, reembark upon, uh, those, uh, meetings, uh, that I would go out to the various districts, uh, to meet and, and with, with the residents. Uh, so on March ninth, uh, Wednesday, uh, we'll be, beginning at six-thirty, we'll be at South Olive Tennis Center. Uh, I'll be providing updates on city priorities, uh, and my vision, making West Palm Beach a community of opportunity for all, and, uh, as I mentioned, this will be the first of four town halls to be held in the western, southern, central, and northern part of our city, and this will cover neighborhoods south of Southern Boulevard. And I believe
Mayor, real quick, if I could just
No, you're interrupting.
South of, south of Southern?
South of Okeechobee, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you for making that clear for me. South of Okeechobee. Uh, so I encourage all South End residents to join us on Wednesday, March ninth at six-thirty at the South Olive Tennis Center, and, um, that, that's okay, I'm sure you do, but, uh, uh, it, it's been mentioned before, uh, Women's History Month in March, uh, and again, congratulations to all the women who comprise a part of the leadership, uh, of, of, of this city, um, and I, our city is better for yours, because of your service. Also, a quick reminder, it's Bike to Work Week this week. Go to W P B org dot org for information about all activities, and, uh, that is all that I have, and this meeting is officially adjourned, record broken.